All right, everybody. We're called the February 6, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Baldwin County Commission to Order. And the first item on our agenda will be the invocation by Brother Leon from Robert's Tale Assembly of God. And then we'll be followed by the pledge led by Skip, Commissioner Ball.
Thank you for the invitation to come. And one of my favorite passages of Scripture is found in Numbers in chapter number six and verse 22, where Moses gave Aaron instructions to go to the people of Israel. And he said, this is what I want you to say to them. He said, I want you to tell them. He said, may the Lord bless you and keep you, and may his face shine upon you, may he be gracious unto you, and may his countenance be lifted up toward you, that you may name the name of Christ and live in peace. And that is, I believe, the sole purpose of of leadership and the directive of this commission and all those that have authority over us. And the Bible tells us to pray for you. And we do that on a regular basis, from our fellowship to you every Sunday. We pray for the leadership of this county and this state and our nation. And so today I bring to you blessings from the Lord. His word may be established upon you, and the wisdom that you you have today, may you understand that it all comes from him. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, today in the name of Jesus, we come to you. And you said whatsoever we ask in your name, that we do. I ask that this passage of Scripture come to life in their minds and in their heart. I pray that, Lord, as we, a congregation of people, of community from all over Baldwin County, we stand together to realize that our peace comes from you, and your grace is sufficient for every need, that you're the giver of all wisdom, and you will also give understanding. The Bible tells us, he says for us to pray for wisdom, but more than that, pray for understanding. I pray for the understanding of the affairs that will come before this commission. I pray that God, you will touch them with a supernatural touch. And I pray that, Lord, what they do will create an atmosphere that we, as Baldwin County citizens, together, we will live in peace, and that, God, we will we we will live in harmony, and our economics will grow, and our statue will be well, will grow because of our influence throughout not only Baldwin County, but throughout the state of Alabama. And so we commit them to you today. Again, may your blessings be upon them, and may your countenance be lifted up toward them. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
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 Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the minutes from the January 16, 2024 Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 16, 2024 Regular Meeting.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gruber, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve the minutes of the January 16, 2024 Regular Meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Next item, it's payment of the bills from the Finance Chair.
Madam Chairman?
Make a motion that we approve the payment of the bills.
Second that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Ball to pay our bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What a good thing to be able to pay our bills. All right. The next item is just a notification of interim payments approved by Clerk Treasurer as allowed under Policy 8.1. After that, we have our consent agenda. And I will note the addition of item GA1 that was an addenda item is included in the consent. And I hear a motion to approve our consent agenda as set in our work session.
So move.
All right. Have a motion.
Second.
Oh, that came at the same time. I'll give it to Commissioner Gruber. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Gruber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Consent agenda passes. So now that brings us all the way down to presentations. The first presentation we have is a proclamation for Black History Month.
What do we want to do first? Do you want me to read it first?
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Madam Chairman. Proclaiming the month of February 2024 as Black History Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas in 1986, Congress passed Public Law 99-244, which designated February 1986 as National Black History Month. This law noted that February 1, 1986, would mark the beginning of the 60th Annual Public and Private Salute to Black History. And whereas the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle of this struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. Black History Month also calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its ideas. And whereas, the 2024 theme for Black History Month is on African Americans in arts. In the field of visual performance arts, literature, fashion, language, film, music, architectural, and other forms of cultural expression, the African American influence has been paramount. Black Americans have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our country for the better. The Baldwin County Commission continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community, which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our county. And whereas, let us continue to fight for the equity, opportunity, and dignity to which every American is due in equal measure. Encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that February 2024 is hereby set aside as Black History Month in Baldwin County, Alabama.
All right. You guys want to get a photo there? And Felicia, would you like to say a few words, or?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
There is a question on the table that have come to me. Why is Black History Month table? I mean, why is Black History Month relevant? So I feel the need to address that. Black History Month is relevant because it's inevitable. It follows us everywhere we go. It is relevant because it applies to our own lives, the pastimes that have shaped us, and the mistakes from which we have learned, and the privileges we have or lack. So as we think about celebrating Black History, it's not just about celebrating what others who have gone before us have done. It is also about creating a history that those who come after us will have something worth telling. So as you look forward, and as you live your life each day, ask yourself, what will we talk about 20 years, 30 years, 50 years from now? Keep in mind that history is being made and recorded every day. What you did two weeks ago, a year ago, even what you did yesterday is now history. So I'm asking you at this time to self-reflect. Self-reflect on a time when you weren't inclusive. Reflect and ask yourself, am I contributing to a culture of diversity, inclusion, and unity? Have you looked for ways to learn about people from different cultures and backgrounds, and to understand how we are all connected? This time is essential. It's time for us to take targeted actions to change the course of history. While changing that seems like it's big shoes to fill, let's remember that change starts with one single act. So as your Archives' Director, and more importantly, as a Black woman in America, I'm compelled to raise a clarion call. I'm calling you all to action, and I'm asking you to recognize Black History Month by acting. I'm asking you to work with me to help me to achieve equity in our communities, our workplace, and beyond. I'm asking you to advocate for diversity in your organizations. Get out into your community, volunteer, and get to know and serve people from marginalized groups. Seek systematic change and stop with the on all fixes. Scripture continually shows us that God's focus is on justice and redemption for the oppressed and brokenhearted. Michael 6:8 is a is a very powerful verse, that guides our lives as we seek to live out our faith. He has shown you, human one, what is good and what the Lord requires from you to do justice, embrace faithful love, and to walk humbly with your God. So as I reflect on this verse in the context of Black History, I see that these commands are particularly relevant for those seeking to pursue justice and equity. So let's live our lives accordingly. Let's live our lives in a manner that we do things that are worth other people telling about, that will inspire them to move beyond what our forefathers could or could not do. So I encourage you to celebrate diversity, because diversity unifies us. Our unity is beautiful when it reflects the diversity of our world. We are all different, but we all have something that we can contribute. I believe that we can become the change we seek by doing these. I encourage you to be a part of something bigger and accept this call to action. I want you to think of it in three ways. Our history is our destiny, but it is up to us to fulfill it. Our history is our legacy, but it is up to us to build it. Our history is our story, but it's up to us to tell it. So no matter what our history has been, what happened in the past, our destiny is what we create, starting today. Thank you.
But with that being said, we have a proclamation that we need to pass. So
We're doing a picture?
Do you want to do a picture with the Commissioners? We had one with Commissioner McKenzie. You want to do one with us? Y'all want to go ahead and do the the vote?
We can do that.
Madam Chairman, I made the motion that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So Baldwin County Commission declares February as Black History Month. All right. Let's do the quick photo.
Do we want to say?
Oh, we can back up.
Yeah, I thought we voted.
I didn't know if y'all wanted to.
We've already voted, but would you guys like to say anything?
Well, I just wanted to just to extend a thanks to Felicia and her staff, and just commend them for the great work that she does. And her leadership is proven. Her staff is doing a great job. I think we've we see a great staff over there now at Archives in History. And and thank you, Felicia, for keeping this important piece of history going. And we're honored and privileged to declare this month Black History Month.
Anybody else?
Just Felicia, thank you for what you do. You know, there's so much that you do that, you know, it's it's oh, it's a lot. And we really appreciate what you do. Thank you so very much.
I just echo what the other Commissioner said. Thank you, Felicia and your staff. Thank you for what you do. We we just got to keep looking forward and not looking backwards, like you said. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I recently subscribed to the Great Courses, and I was listening to one about the, I think it was a professor from one of the Virginia colleges, which is very much into history. He was a history guy. And I was listening to, I think I was on my way back from Birmingham the other day, so I heard a couple hours of it. And it really was interesting to hear how the South emerged, not just the issue with, it to me, it was it was about the American Indians and the removal. And and I never really had heard it put that that was genocide, you know, and it was in that course. And so it brought in all the, like you said, these struggles and things that we we've all come through. And it's just important that we that we that we study history. So thank you for what you guys do. I love the Archives Department. Thank you all for being here. Okay, now we are on to the next presentation. And Beau, from our Personnel Department, is going to do the presentation for our retiree recognition ceremony. And we have some of our retirees in the house today. And I looked at that list that of people who have retired over the last year. It's very impressive with the numbers. And I know you're going to probably give us some stats on that. All right. It's your, you have the floor.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Felicia. That was a very well spoken message. We always keep moving forward. So I am, I've got the privilege today to do the retiree recognition ceremony. Baldwin County Commission And each of these plaques represents a big thank you for your respective years of service and dedication to the citizens and to your team at Baldwin County. So we'll start off with Revenue Department, and if Mr. Walt Lindsey and Ms. Brenda Wallace could help us.
She had 37 years. Next is Ms. Edith Harris. She had 30 years. Next is Ms. K. Mc, I'm sorry, Ms. Sherri Hodges. Sherri Hodges, 28 years of service. And then Ms. K. McDill, 20 years. And then Ms. Mary Waters could not be here today, but she also had 10 years of service.
These women have worked at our office for many years. Rose was the most at 37. Quickly added, so it might be a mistake, that between, plus the two that aren't here, had 143 years total. And made a tremendous difference in our department with the many changes we've had. Computers, Revenue Commissioners, Appeals, Work, and it's unbelievable what they've done. And we appreciate it, and I know the county does. County Commissioners, the people, we have a balancing act. We try to be fair to the county, to the schools, to the cities, most importantly, our citizens. And y'all helped us do that, and I appreciate it.
All right, you ready? All right, next, from our Juvenile Detention Center is Mr. Ron Ballard with 30 years. All right, next, from our Juvenile Detention Center is Mr. Ron Ballard with 30 years. Have Buford come up, help us out. All right, and we have Mary Booth. Mary Booth had 25 years of service.
Just 30 years of service. 30 years of service. So Mary was with Highway for 18, has been with Planning and Zoning for about five, and in the balance with Probate as well. So we thank Mary so much for her service at Baldwin County, and also she is still with us, working part-time. So she is still serving the citizens, reviewing subdivisions, and also reviewing exempt subdivisions. So it's glad that we're able to keep Mary. And then Bo, did you want to put DJ Hart on screen?
She will be on.
Very good. And also, DJ Hart, Delita Hart, DJ Hart could not be with us here today, so we wanted to recognize her as well. And DJ, she was our Planning Technician 3, handled a lot of the incoming phone calls, and was really a high-level administrator for us at Planning and Zoning. So we certainly wish DJ well. So I think DJ aged out, so forget her number of years of service. She had 18. She had 18 combined. She worked for the Building Department for a few years, and then the balance with Planning and Zoning. All right, thank you, Commissioners.
All right, if Ms. Terry Graham would come up for solid waste?
And we have Joey Morris. He had 25 years of service.
If Ms. Ann Simpson would come up for Bratz? First one would be Mr. James Paget, and he had 10 years of service. And then Mr. Ray Mayo. Mr. Ray, come on.
These two gentlemen have done an excellent job with Bratz for 10 years as drivers. They were both State Drivers of the Year during their tenure with us, and they also performed very well at the national competition. They're both veterans, one a Marine and one served in the Army. We appreciate your service. They have represented the Commission very well and have taken care of the citizens of Baldwin County. We appreciate you guys.
In the Highway Department, we have Mr. Danny Harville. Mr. Danny Harville had 20 years of service.
So Danny has mastered one of the most complex pieces of equipment that we have in our whole fleet, which is the knuckle boom. And I don't think what people realize is how critical that operation is to the aesthetics and the beauty of our county. And to have somebody that day in and day out keeps our roadways clean, picks up the large bulk items, it negates attractive nuisances, and it really instills a sense of pride in the various communities that he serves over the years. And that day-in-and-day-out dedication, so many times gets taken for granted, but when you see somebody that dedicates to a specific role over all these years, it should be commended. And thank you so much for this opportunity. And Danny, great job. Thank you so much for your years of service.
No, you want to stand behind?
You can stand behind that.
Okay. All right, you guys, I will stand you up.
I'm glad I'm not over there.
No, he can't stand in front of anybody. Come on. Y'all gonna have to scoot down.
6'4", 6'5".
6'9". Do you play basketball?
That's what Commissioner Baldwin said.
Yeah, yeah, scoot it down this little bit.
Yeah, y'all go, come on down, come on down. You gotta go that way.
You gotta go the.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Right here.
This needs to be the center.
What'd you think, Taylor? How's it look?
Got the red seat between me and you, man. Okay. Thank y'all. Thank y'all guys for coming today. Okay, Bo, you want to finish out?
Yes, ma'am. And the following employees could not make it today. So, but we still want to recognize them for their awards. So Ms. Angie Gottler, she had 15 years of service in the Probate Office. Ms. Nicole Foster had 25 years in solid waste. Ms. Sharon Hunt had 25 years in sales and use tax. Ms. Mary Waddle had 25 years in solid waste. Ms. Kimberly Granger, she had 23 years in solid waste. Ms. Bobby Lambert, she had 20 years in solid waste. Ms. Joy Hadley, she had 20 years of service in Baldwin County. Ms. DJ Hart, as Buford talked about earlier, had 18 years. Ms. Eva Cutzinger, 17 years in the Finance and Accounting Department. Mr. Joey Nunley had 16 years with us, but 29 years of total public service. Andrea Laster, she had 14 years of service. Mr. Jared Grady had 12 years in Bratz Department. Ms. Richard O'Neill had 10 years in Highway. Gina Finley, she had nine years with us and 25 years of total public service. Mr. Ronnie Piper has 10 years in the Highway Department. Ms. Amada Harrison had seven years with us and 10 years total public service. And Mr. Murray Autheme had three years with us and 18 years of total public service.
All right. That is amazing. That's a lot of years, when you think about it. It's older than our country. So that concludes our section on presentations. And next, we don't have any public hearings today scheduled, but we do have an item under other staff recommendations.
Madam Chairman, do you mind if I say something about the retirees before they're leaving?
Oh.
It's all right, they're leaving. Before they, if you're still here, if you're a retiree, I'd just like to say thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. I mean, the county wouldn't have moved this forward like we have without y'all, so thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Thank y'all for what y'all have done.
You know, I'm so used to going by the script, and that wasn't in the script. So, you know, y'all don't have to help me out. You put in there, give the Commissioners a chance to talk, because they're politicians and they want to talk. I'm sorry.
Well, the four of us can't do what they do without them. We appreciate all that you do.
Yes.
And now we need another 590-something years to come back.
Absolutely. Big shoes to fill. Thank you, guys. Okay, that being said, we do not have any public hearings, but there isn't, the next item on our agenda, there are some folks in the audience who have requested to talk. And I would imagine they would like to speak to us prior to us, considering this item. So with that being said, I have a couple of forms up here. Do we have any additional forms been turned in? Okay. Is there anyone that is going to want to speak in this timeframe that has not filled out a speaker form? Please do that pronto. But I will say this, even though this is not a public hearing, all individuals wishing to speak, then I'm going to allow you an opportunity to speak. Your comments should be limited to three minutes. Groups are asked to select a spokesperson to speak on behalf of their group with comments limited to five. So whenever we call you to the podium, let me know if you're speaking on your behalf or on behalf of a group. We do adhere to the time limit. Thank you. The first one I have here is Curtis Smith. All right, well, you know what? Just the order, it was laid on my desk. So Mayor McMillan, Mayor Mike McMillan, Spanish Fork. You may come. Are you speaking on?
For the group.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Two other speakers afterwards.
Okay, you have five minutes.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address this with you. I know it's not something you had to do to inform the city of what was going on, but we thank you for that. And certainly want to recognize the Everwood folks. They're a good community partner, and I appreciate what they do every day. It's certainly a big part of our city. I guess the first question is why? Because I don't see why this is, how this is a benefit to the city or the county to designate this as an industrial park. You know, it's adjacent to our city limits. It's an industrial park designation which would allow the owners of the business within the industrial park to construct and operate industrial facilities for use with limited government oversight by the County Commission, certainly other government entities. Based on the location of the property and its proximity to the corporate limits. Based on the location of the property and its proximity to the corporate limits and surrounding residential areas, there's great concerns about the potential impacts on the area. No oversight by local government entity could be problematic. If the plan used for the property changed in the future because it was sold, it becomes a whole different ballgame. So we don't know where we're going with that. It certainly could negatively impact the surrounding area. One of the issues is the 20-foot proposed buffer with 20-foot. I mean, it's like for me to miss the ball, that's 20-foot. That's not a big distance for a buffer for an industrial plant to a residential area that was there prior to the plant, which is very important to note. Ingress and egress to the property is concerning to me on Highway 31, there's potential of a lot of traffic. County Commission, the city may be comfortable with Everwood's present operations, which we are, but other uses may not be appropriate depending on the location of the property and the use of the neighboring properties. Industrial park could not be annexed by the city of Spanish Ford, which basically surrounds the property, therefore creating an island within our city, which is a problem. While the types of industrial parks authorized by this statute might be appropriate in some areas with large enough tracts of land to provide complete screening, this should not be located in a growing metropolitan area like the city of Spanish Ford. This is our fastest-growing area, and so it presents us an issue. Everwood, in the past, has been able to grow and thrive in this area, and I think the only issue that I was aware of was an interpretation of a fire code which could be simply addressed with an amendment to our codes. Other commercial and industrial developers in the county have been able to plan, permit, and develop some large projects without an industrial park designation. And I think this is setting a bad precedent for down the road, what you're going to do, because every business can come to you and do this. So based on that, the city council respectfully requests that this petition be denied. Mr. Carnison will say a few words now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioners, I've just been asked to represent a couple of the statutes.
Let's get our clock on. Our, it's just going the wrong way, actually. It's supposed to go down, but it was going up. There we go. Hey. Sometimes that clock's the only thing that keeps us from being here all day. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I do, just for disclosure purposes, state that I do represent the county on some items and the city on some items and the city council. And you all have asked, you know, the issues about legal things, and so you have great counsel. I'm just going to focus on the statute itself to make sure that you're aware of those issues as part of your decision process. In particular, under Section 11-23-4, if you create this industrial park, then it states that no construction or installation permit shall be required. That means there's not going to be any building permits or other approvals that come through the county for that process. One question that I've asked several times and even asked of an Everwood representative on Friday is what building codes are going to apply and what exceptions to those building codes are going to be implemented. And to this date, nobody's been able to tell me what that is. It's basically becomes its own kind of authority and jurisdiction. And just like the cities and the counties adopt the international standard codes or applicable codes, you also adopt exceptions to those codes. And those exceptions can be good or bad, depending on how they work. And so nobody's been able to answer that question. Furthermore, as it relates to the development, it says that government services will be provided by the authority, and those include police protection, fire protection, streets, road maintenance, garbage collection, all those kind of things. It states that the bylaws are to set forth what utilities or services are going to be provided by the governing body, which is the industrial board in that site. And then it allows for mutual aid agreements to be entered into for those other services. The sheriff maintains jurisdiction over the site, but there's been no mutual aid agreements presented or discussed at this point in time with the city of Spanish Ford regarding police. The city of Spanish Ford presently provides fire protection. There's been no request for mutual aid agreements, to my knowledge, to provide fire protection there. And also, to my knowledge, they don't employ a fireman or on a fire truck. And so none of that's been set forth at this point in time, and there are no bylaws that have been proposed. There are the declaration of covenants and restrictions that's been submitted that purports to limit some use on the site. Again, with all of these other concerns, there's a concern that maybe that doesn't go far enough to address. But there are some things and questions that would need to be ultimately answered. For example, one of the things that we're all concerned about is ingress and egress, and you all are concerned about that, too. For example, when somebody comes forward with a project, either a building, a project, building permit, subdivision, one of the things that you all look at is ingress and egress and impact on neighboring highways and infrastructure. And sometimes that involves a review by the county highway department, sometimes that review involves a review by ALDOT. All of that is done in the permitting process. But in this case, they don't have to come to you for a permit. They don't have to do anything. They can go out there and build that building. And as long as they use the same access that they've always used, they don't have to get permission from ALDOT. So they could greatly increase the amount of trip capacity, the use on that site, without ever invoking any jurisdiction. And so I just say all that to say that I think you should be really careful about what the impact this is, especially in this location, in the surrounding properties. And then finally, in one section, and this is an ambiguity that I pointed out, it says no construction installation is required. And this is not an issue for you, this is the state legislation itself. But then in 1128-3, it says, "Such action," which is approving the petition, "shall not limit or diminish the rights and responsibilities of the county commission concerning the park." What rights and responsibilities? We agree there's no building oversight. Counties maintain roads, the county provides trash collection, the cities provide fire service. I think there's an ambiguity about what that means that should be resolved before you step down this road, at least for discussion purposes. And so I just want to let you know that those issues are in the statute. And if you decide to approve this, I would encourage you to meet with your counsel to make sure that you've addressed all those items.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you for hearing us today. I know you didn't have to. And so I appreciate...
Thank you for thanking me. Because you're right.
I represent District 1, City Council for Spanish Ford, which encompasses the property in question here. And I also live in the neighborhood that's immediately to the west, Churchill, neighborhood Churchill. And just want to make sure I'm representing my neighbors. I've spoken to a lot of them. I'm disappointed they didn't come today, but there's a lot of concern about the possibility of this becoming an industrial park. Also, the city council last night, I'm sure you got copies of it, passed a resolution opposing this designation as an industrial park. I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said or will be said. We just want to go on record in opposition and just consider the fact that, you know, we're going to live and die, and the property owners are going to live and die. And 20 years from now, though, the property will remain. And this designation as an industrial park will follow the property and not the people. And so 20, 30, 40 years down the road, it may be kind of hard for someone to explain, why is there an industrial park right in the heart of a city where you've got, you know, residential and shopping and schools and churches all right there, right there surrounding it? So anyway, again, I just thank you for hearing us and considering our opinion on this and the impact on our city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. As I said earlier, this is not a public hearing. We held the public hearing a month ago, and it was requested that we table this decision until now. And we have, there's a lot of concerns that were brought forth a month ago. And during that timeframe, we have addressed the majority of that. And I have asked Lee Lawson if he would come up and speak on this matter to maybe clear up some things that may be confusing.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. Good morning. I think the mayor and David and others have made a point and addressed their concerns. You know, this is not precedent-setting. This law has been on the books in Alabama for a number of years. This designation has been granted in other jurisdictions within Alabama. So there is not a precedent being setted by you offering this designation to Everwood. Again, by the mayor's own admission, which has been a great corporate citizen and has agreed to a lot of the conditions within this agreement. Conditions which limit commercial use to both Jesse and Austin Road, which are immediate residential roads to this, that if this designation is not granted and this agreement's not made, they could put commercial trucks on there tomorrow. If this agreement's not made, this parcel that is in the heart of Spanish Ford that has grown around this parcel for the last 30 years, I mean, let's make that clear. Everwood's been there for 30 years and is continually invested in their site, has continually employed great citizens of Ballin County, over 100 now, on their payroll. And so again, they could build anything they wanted to tomorrow within right. So this restricts the current use that's on the property to only be the use. And if they were to go outside that use, the designation would then be remanded. And again, the commission has put plenty of protections in that, has worked jointly, I think, with those concerns out there and with Everwood the company to make sure that all interests are being served. And so again, this designation helps them continually and confidently invest in their site. They have some other facilities in other parts, Conyers, Georgia being one, where the same circumstances happened. Their facility and their investment was there decades ago, and a fast-growing city came around it. And there were agreements made with the city council there that after other city councils turned over, they decided they didn't want that investment in the heart of their city anymore and did things to detrimentally affect the investment in the plan itself. And so, I mean, again, some of this is a little bit of protection for the facility and the investment long-term. The folks at Great Southern Wood have made a huge investment in this facility within the last year. And so again, that's what this designation does. I think this commission has done a great job of addressing the concerns and protecting the citizens adjacent to this. Again, residential development has come up around this, this facility in the last 30 years, and I think the restrictions within this designation, this commission has done a great job of making sure that all those concerns are being addressed, and there are protections for the property going forward and for the citizens adjacent to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With all that being said...
I think the mayor wanted...
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished.
Again, I ask, what is the benefit to the county and the city to do this? I just, I have not, never get my hands around that. Certainly want to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments from the city. As we have discussed this issue, we concede no benefit to the general public. The county of the city of Spanish Ford, by granting this request, Everwood is operating and thriving under present regulations and county oversight. There's present no zoning on this property. The only real regulations affecting development at the time are applicable subdivision regulations and permitting, building permitting and rebute. The county should not relinquish this minimum level of oversight and tie the city of Spanish Ford's hands in the future as the property could not be annexed according to the statute as presently drafted. Under the circumstances, you should not grant this property special authority that no other property in the county has. And it is present in our county. It may not be in other areas, but it is in Ballin County. We believe this sets a bad precedent and would grant this property owner a competitive advantage over similarly situated properties in the county. We are told by the owner, we should trust him to do the right thing, and we do. But there's no guarantee that the property will not be sold again in the future. So you don't know what you're going to have there. I tell you, you should trust yourselves and future officials elected by the people to do the right things. For reasons sent forth and resolution adopted unanimously by the city council last night and by the letter sent to the county commission, we request that this petition be denied.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone that didn't ask to speak? I know this is not a public hearing, but I'm trying to be, you know, allow anybody, if you want, if anybody else that's in the audience that has something they'd like to say to the commission? No? Commissioners?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
It's in my district, District 2. And I listened to the mayor and the city councilman, what they said, you know, some things that they brought up. But everything that we have in this covenant addresses most of it. And I'm not being disrespectful to the mayor, because he brought up good points, and the attorney and the city councilman. But we're looking at something at a company that wants something. It's no difference than what a citizen wants in the same way. They want something. We look at it, the whole picture, and we got these covenants to keep them. And if they do sell this property, it voids the industrial park access or the classification, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't understand, and I understand what the mayor's saying, but I don't understand when you say it doesn't benefit the county. Well, it might not, but we're doing something what this business wants, and we're trying to help them. And if we don't do anything, it's unzoned. And I just don't understand some of the things that y'all bring up, but I respect y'all for doing that, because I would do the same thing. But I just don't see some of the things. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Before I call for a motion, is there anyone else like to say anything? Mr. Gruber, Mr. Ball?
I don't.
I do want to say is that, as I said to Mayor McMillan when he called me the other day, I didn't wake up one morning and decide, hey, you know what? I want to make an industrial park over there in Spanish Ford. This was brought to us. It's something that the legislature passed, and it's a designation that is allowable if you grant that. I did a lot of research on it after we were asked to do this. And there is, you may not perceive this as a benefit, but I see it as a benefit that, you know, we were able to put the restrictions and covenants in there. As it was stated earlier by Mr. Lawson, that it's unzoned. And when you're unzoned, you don't have to comply with a lot of things that, none of the things that we put in there. Now, if they were annexed into the city, they would be under zoning automatically. But the thing is, is they don't want to be annexed, and that was their main reason that I understood for them applying. Research the company, the company is a upstanding company. You guys didn't deny that. They're a good asset to the community with being a good employer. The stipulations that we put in there are to, that is the benefit, is to help protect and do that. But there's a benefit to having a good employer in the community and based on the fact that they did one of these over in Mobile County. I know it wasn't quite as close to city limits as it is over here, but I don't feel like everything that is going on there is happening right now. This is just gives them the protection of really not being annexed. I don't think that their goal was to, I know you can't say for certain, but I had no feeling or inclination whatsoever that they were trying to skirt the building codes or anything like that, because they have an operation to protect a sizable investment there. But we reached out to the city of Spanish Ford out of courtesy, because we wanted you guys to be able to go on site, inspect, do whatever you wanted to do, get your questions answered. And other than the fact that maybe one day you wanted to annex them in, I really don't see where it's hurting anything. So with that being said, do we hear a motion about the industrial park designation for Everwood preserving?
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion to approve it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gruber. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion of approving the industrial designation signify by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we took care of our addenda item and consent. And do we have anybody signed up for other public comments? No? Okay. Anybody from the press have questions? Okay, that brings us down to item J, which is Commissioner comments. Let's start with Commissioner Gruber.
Yes, I want to thank the staff for all they do, getting these meetings together for us, putting it together, and a lot of time goes into it with the research and everything else. I just want to thank them for all the hard work they do.
All right.
Just echo what Commissioner Gruber said about the staff, and I want to say thank you to the retirees, you know? I said it earlier, but they, most of them left. But, you know, if it wasn't for them, this county wouldn't move forward like it is. So I just want to say thank you to them. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for... Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Ball?
Yep, today was a good day, recognizing the retirees and Felicia's. Today was a good day recognizing the retirees and, and Felicia's. I forgot what you call it, resolution. And just thank y'all, the staff, for everything that you do and thank the commission for everything that y'all do, working together. Sometimes we might have to make tough decisions and appreciate the opportunity to get set up here and serve with you guys. And just as, as Matt said, to all the retirees that left out of here today, congratulations on whatever the next chapter in life is. So I appreciate all your hard work that you've dedicated to this county and, and your many years of service. Thank y'all.
All right. Back to me. Ditto everything that my fellow commissioners have said. I, I had a couple of comments I want to make, but before I do that, I was like, well, okay. I'll back up. I will say what I was going to say first. I do want to have us to be introduced to our new clerk treasurer in a second. But we made a decision, the commission as a whole made a decision last year to do an organizational restructure where that we have basically, I know we have the JDC in there, but we also kind of have what's called like co-CEOs. And yesterday morning, I listened to, you know, probably think all I do is sit around and listen to podcasts. I just try to be like productive with my time on the road, okay? But there was a podcast that I listened to and it was like, you know, is having two CEOs good or bad, the pros and cons and different things like that. And I will have to say that any organization that you have, it really boils down to the people that work for you. And it also, it also depends on the govern, like we sit kind of like what I've always thought of. This is my interpretation, like a board of directors. And then our executive staff's kind of like our CEOs of the company and, or the county, company, county, whatever. But anyways, so we have Frank Lundie as our county engineer, AKA really public works because we have to adhere to a, a piece of legislation that won't let us change his title. And then we have, he is an engineer though. Okay. And then we have Roger Rendelman, who is our administrator. And one thing that I was a takeaway from that was that if those two people can work together well, then it'll work. And if you get an ego-driven people, nothing works. I don't care if you got one person, two people or however many people. And I just want to thank those two because I don't see that at all. I don't see no ego-driven unless they do something behind my back, but they're not. I know they're not. But working together is so important. And I think that the thing I took away from that, it was called Freakonomics, and it's a, it's a podcast on there about that. So if you're interested, you can look it up. I did the one without commercials and that wastes a whole lot of time, but I am not paying for another subscription. But anyhow, I did the one with commercials and that is annoying. But, okay. I think I sound like my sister and will always tell her to get to the point. Stop it. See, y'all are laughing, so somebody's paying attention. With that being said, we structured the other appointed directors underneath these guys. And so Roger was tasked with finding us a new clerk treasurer. And no longer does the commission have to be the one who front faces and has to have those positions spotlighted out in, in, in the, you know, when we interview somebody, it's like the media can be there. I mean, one time we had a guy from press sit there through the whole thing. I mean, it's tough, you know? But not that anything would be said behind doors, it wouldn't be, but people are sometimes more comfortable with that not being the way it is. So with all that being said, today in our consent agenda, we appointed a new clerk treasurer to Ballin County. And I would like to ask Mr. Scott Collins if he would come up to the podium and introduce himself to us. Just tell us what you'd like to tell us about yourself, okay?
Sure. All right. I'm Scott Collins. I'm your new clerk treasurer.
Oh, come on. You got to give me a little more than that.
No, I'm kidding.
You know, you are appointed.
No. No. I appreciate talking to you very much. To your point, I met with Roger, applied, went through the process and it was really seamless. The staff was incredibly helpful. This is an important position for you. It's an important position for, for Mr. Rendelman and for the operation of the county. I certainly appreciate the trust in that. I will tell you, I understand that trust given is not trust earned. There is a time that that takes place. I look forward to, to working with you and making sure that everything we do furthers the county to the, to the hope and way that you, you believe it will.
All right. Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. His face is not red, so I guess I didn't embarrass him. Okay. So all that being said, I just thank everybody for being here. Your time is valuable. I thank our staff. I thank my colleagues here. I think I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve the people of this county. You know, those who know me, I'm a big person of faith. I heard it said in, in, in a sermon recently that God does not prosper things that he doesn't ordain or appoint. And I just feel like that a lot of these things are because God wants it to happen. So with that being said, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Adjourned. Thank you.